Good evening, I'm calling to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education. Today is Monday, May 13th, 2013, and we are at the Fordis Building. Would you please stand and join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Lysin.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Sudar.
Here.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Here.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt the minutes of April 8th, 15th, and 22nd.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second by Mrs. De Angelis. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Lysin.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. And do we have a legislative liaison report, Mr. Smith?
Yes, we do, Madam President. Thank you very much. All right, so I was actually in Columbus today and was attempting to get the latest news as to what the state budget process was and when we could expect some sort of action from Columbus. As all of you know, who are Euclid schools graduates and attended your government classes and took good notes, the governor of Ohio proposes a two-year budget. It goes to the House of Representatives first, then it goes to the Senate, and then if there's any differences, it goes to a conference committee and then both chambers have to sign off on it. So on April 18th, the full House, the Ohio House voted, passed it, and so it's been in the Senate Finance Committee since April 23rd. The anticipated date of the Senate Finance Committee voting on the Ohio budget is June 4th, and then it'll likely go to a full Senate vote on June 5th. Some of the differences are that the governor's base funding formula is based on $5,000 per student, but there was a lot of additional dollars factored in for various components of what your student population looked like. Those components actually benefited the Euclid Public Schools a lot, but they didn't benefit most of the districts across Ohio. So the funding formula has been completely reworked initially by the House, and again, it's going to the Senate now. The base funding amount that they're using per student is $5,732, which is the 2009 figure. That's how they retreated to that number. The interesting thing about that is, of course, that if the 2009 figure were adjusted up for inflation, we would be getting $6,300 per student. So again, that's kind of a subtle cut they're already dealing with. The other important thing to realize is that this is a 4,200-page bill, and it's because it includes an awful lot of public policy changes that quite frankly would normally be seen as hurtful, especially to public schools, such as the charter, the expansion of vouchers and charters. The House, you might remember from the last General Assembly session, House Bill 136 was a bill to expand the voucher program across Ohio, and over 400 public school districts passed resolutions, I'm pretty sure the Euclid schools were one of those, opposing House Bill 136. Well, a very similar type of piece of legislation has been worked into this budget bill, because the general feeling is that if it were to stand alone, it would again attract an awful lot of negative criticism, so they've snuck it into, again, the 4,200-page budget bill. Now, what's interesting as this bill unfolds in the Senate is there are some competing financial interests, such as the governor proposed a $300 million straight A fund primarily to try to fund some educational innovations. That has been cut back to $150 million. There's also, one of the lead senators really wants to expand some pre-K dollars, and that is being talked about as a price tag of about $100 million. So it's just, it's going to be interesting to see how this unfolds in the Senate and what the Ohio Senate deems as a public priority in terms of their education funding and what they choose not to, which is to say that again, because the replication of the voucher expansion, because that is included in the bill and it comes with a fairly hefty price tag, because there are some competing interests, it'll be interesting to see if again, the expansion of the voucher program survives the Senate. The other thing that I would say is that it seems like some of those buzzwords that are being used regarding education funding are again, efficiency and not quality, and I think that's an important distinction for the public to be aware of. And one of the things, and one of the things I've said about efficiency before, and I've said it from this chair, is the end result of doing more with less eventually leads to doing everything with nothing. So you can only, you know, kind of wring out efficiency so much, and I would remind the general public, and I would remind Columbus, but quite frankly, they're not going to listen to me right now, I would remind the general public that a study came out in June of last year, June 2012, called "Beyond Boundaries," and it talks about the shared services that public education is already undertaking, and the whole idea was to see how much there were and try to prepare kind of a best practices manual. And that report, less than a year old, said that public school services through shared services has saved last year on an annual basis $1.1 billion. And again, you know, so public school districts, because we're only funded through property tax and whatever the state gives us, we're kind of always looking for ways to deliver education services more efficiently, so we won't have to go to the voters as often, and when we do go to the voters, it'll be for as small of an ask as possible. So there's already kind of the incentive for efficiencies built into our model for how we deliver public education. The other thing that's being talked about, so hopefully I don't beat on the whole efficiency and non-quality, the other thing that Columbus is talking about is competition rather than collaboration, and I would say there's a problem with that also, and the "Beyond Boundaries" study kind of gets to that also. We are born to collaborate because we have a shared desire to not go to the voters, that leads to saving $1.1 billion. If you turn this into a competition model, then best practices aren't shared, and quite frankly, public school districts then spend some money on marketing their ideas, which is not a direct result of dollars spent in the classroom. So, by the way, the "Beyond Boundaries" study actually surveyed 600 of the 612 public school districts, and they found out that 97% of all the school districts in Ohio were actually sharing services one way or another. Up here in northeast Ohio, we are a member of the Ohio Schools Council, and that's where we and the Euclid Public Schools do a lot of our shared services, and we actually save beyond what most school districts save, at least in terms of a pure dollar amount. So at any rate, we will keep the public apprised as to what the budget bill looks like as it comes out of the Senate. Again, the Senate Finance Committee scheduled to vote on June 4th, the full Senate vote on June 5th. Then the differences between the House bill and the Senate bill will get hammered out in a conference committee. But again, what I would just kind of like to remind the Euclid general public about is every time you hear efficiency, you really should be listening for the word quality, and anytime you hear the word competition, it should really be collaboration, because that's a better model for better educational outcomes and better cost savings in the K-12 public education system, at least in this state. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And do we have a student liaison report, Mrs. De Angelis?
Yes, we do. First of all, today is Monday, May 13th. Wednesday, May 15th, there's no school in Euclid this week, so for teacher in service and staff training, I want to remind everybody about that first. Early Learning Center, this week on the 14th and 16th, the Euclid Public Libraries will be visiting them and exposing them to the Euclid Library. At Arbor Elementary School, Parent Partners, also called Arbor Fifth, begins this month, and Euclid High School students come as helpers. The Spring Concert is May 23rd at 6:30 PM, and Dancing Geometry will have their accumulating event on May 31st. Bluestone Elementary, 4th grade students will be going with Officer Schubert on a fishing trip tomorrow, May 14th. The Living Wax Museum is May 21st, it's from 6 to 8 PM. Chardon Hills Elementary School hosted the third State of the Panther dress last week with the orchestra and band Drama Smarts students performing. It was a wonderful event, and the kids did a very nice job. Mrs. Stumpf's Room had a professional artist, Daniel McNamara, come visit their room for a lesson. Shoreview Elementary School had an Earth Day groundbreaking ceremony for their school garden. May 11th at Tri-C, 12 Shoreview students competed in a dancing classrooms Color of the Rainbow team match, and they are representing the color purple. Central Middle School, parenting partners meeting on Wednesday nights from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. Middle School Vocal Concert at Euclid High School tomorrow night, May 14th at 7:00 PM. Orchestra Concert at Central Middle School on May 21st at 7:00 PM. Forest Park won the Fuel Up to Play 60 Spring Challenge and will be going to have a field day at the Brown Stadium. Euclid High School, lots of things are happening now in this last month of school. The high school spring band and chorus concerts were fabulous, and students are all very incredibly talented. Mrs. Skobinka's Design and Ceramic Classes exhibited their artwork at the Oakley Artist Muse Gallery in Euclid. Click It or Ticket for a Program at the high school rewarded students for wearing their seatbelts. A special thanks to Officer Boncheck and Mr. Nick Savagio for all their hard work. Jalen Steele and Andrea Bartel signed their letters of intent to play basketball and to swim at the collegiate level. Andrea will be swimming for the University of Cincinnati, and Jalen will be playing basketball for Mercyhurst University. Euclid Royalty Club honored six outstanding seniors in career tech programs for their achievements in and out of the classroom. Some more upcoming events at Euclid High School here. They have a band concert on May 29th, the Senior Art Show is May 22nd, the Spring Sports Awards Banquet is May 21st, Senior Awards Night is May 16th, May 30th, Senior Spring Sports Banquet at Tazano's from 6 to 8, and tomorrow night, Euclid High School Monologues at 7:00 PM, and graduation is on June 9th for Euclid High School this year.
Thank you very much, and we wish those Shoreview dancers, it's ballroom dancing, good luck, because they're in the finals, which will take place on May 19th at the Ohio Theater at Playhouse Square. So that's a really exciting and new venture for our schools. Thank you very much. Are there any visitor comments relative to the agenda? Let's see. You'd come to the podium, please. You need to state your name and address and address the board.
Hi, my name is Deidra Hareford. I live at 344 East 211th Street, and I'm curious as to know why the Child Development Center is closing. I have three children that attend that Child Development Center.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions?
Hello, my name is Chanel McCleod. I'm a resident of 2020 East 226th Street, Euclid, Ohio. I'm also a parent of a Euclid City School Early Learning Center students. I just first wanted to say I understand that it is very challenging to try to balance a budget and to create quality in a district. I am an educator, I'm a parent of a special needs child, and I'm also a Euclid homeowner. So I do understand what it takes to balance things. I do want to say in regard to building quality education and excellence in Euclid, that perhaps if it is at all possible, we need to reconsider what the Early Learning Center can give to our community. Our community is a community of diverse population, and if we look at different studies, we know that the achievement gap has plagued our nation and plagued our community, and where we close the achievement gap is in our early learning. And that is how we can possibly build our community back where we would like it to be, is with the very small children. Early intervention is the key to building Euclid City Schools where we would like them to be in the future. So when it comes to balancing the budget and to make things where we want it to be, we may need to reconsider closing something that may very well be our actual cure to our challenges that we have. So that's just what I would like to say in regard to closing the Early Learning Center. It has been a blessing and it has been absolute fabulous for my children, especially my son who has autism. There is no other place in Euclid that I would trust them with. The people that you have in place in this Early Learning Center have nurtured and cared for, and they are very knowledgeable, and all of the things that you have put in place for professional development, they have gone above and beyond. And I don't even know where in Euclid I could trust my child beyond the Early Learning Center. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't know if I'm missing it, but do we have an item on the agenda that is specific to the Child, the Early Learning Center?
I don't have a word.
Okay. These comments at the early part of the meeting are for items that are on the agenda, but what I would like is for those of you who have made comments or want to make comments about the Early Learning Center. In the back is Mrs. Manfredonia, would you raise your hand? And you can give your name, address, and phone number to her, so the superintendent can contact you.
Okay.
Because we don't have an item, an action item about that today, so that's why it's not really at this time. If you wanted to make comments, then what you need to do is talk to...
That's what my comment is concerning. I have left several messages with the superintendent's office informing them of my name, my address, and my telephone number. I have not had any questions answered.
I will make sure that we have three phone calls out, okay? If you go back and give that information, you can say for the whole meeting, but I just didn't want you to, you know, that you can do that, so that he can get in touch with you, and you'll make sure your contact number. Thank you very much. Are there any other items relative to the agenda? Okay, at this time then, we'll move on to reports and recommendations of the treasurer. Mr. Bassett?
Thank you, Mrs. Van Ho. I am remembering it's a resolution to approve financial data as submitted to the board, and I recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. De Angelis. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysin.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Item 9 is a resolution approving transfers and advances, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. De Angelis. Any questions or comments?
If I just may comment, these are items, most of this is returning of funds, basically a short-term loan from the general fund, the grant funds from last year, to clean those up, and returning $98,500 to the general fund through this.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysin.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. Item 10 is a resolution to adopt a revised five-year forecast, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mr. Smith.
Can I make a comment?
And you sure make lots of comments. For the public's awareness, most of our items at the business meeting are routine, and so that's how we are able to go through them.
Mrs. Van Ho, members of the board, and Mr. Bell, as you all know, the Board of Education is required by state law to maintain a rolling five-year financial forecast. In fact, Euclid did it before it was required. The board must adopt a five-year forecast each fiscal year in the fall and then revise it in the spring, and it is due in May, and this is the revision of the five-year forecast for the fiscal '13 year, which goes out to the fiscal '16, '17 year. The, oops, several changes have occurred since we last adopted the forecast. I want to spend most of my time tonight speaking to those points. Mostly on the revenue side, as normal, we of course had the $5.4 million emergency levy, the 10-year levy passed in November. We know there was a reappraisal of the entire county and got some very disappointing numbers with the reappraisal with Euclid, and it is negatively affecting our real estate revenues, and I'll get into some numbers in a little bit. Mr. Smith talked about the status of the state budget. We don't know where that's headed, but we need to make assumptions at this point, along with where the state's going with school choice and voucher expansion, those kind of things. That's all part and parcel of the state budget. On the expenditure side, we've done a very good job the last few years of actually reducing expenditures. As we know, personnel makes up 80% of our operating budget, and we are in the beginning stages of labor negotiations with all of our employee groups. And we're working through this with the new focus in mind of trying to stretch the last levy out to the 2016 year. We're on the way. I talked about the reappraisal, I'll get into that a little bit more. There's good news and bad news with real estate, obviously, with the new levy, bad news with the reappraisal. The income tax has been pretty solid the last few years. In fact, in the fiscal '12 year, our income tax revenues to the district increased by 7%, and year-to-date through April, we were ahead of April of 2012 by about 4.4%, so that's been strong. Again, the state funding is unknown, as well as the corresponding school choice deductions. Okay, the 2012 reappraisal ended with a reduction in total assessed value of the district of 20.5%. It was most felt in the residential property, which dropped 26%, and in total, the total assessed value of the district dropped by about $151 million. And I'll show you in a little bit how that is actually having a very negative, a very detrimental impact on our revenues. The new levy again is 10 years at $5.4 million, and I will just state again that most of that money went to replace previous lost revenue through the phase out of the personal tangible tax, previous reductions in state funding, and those kind of things. Okay, reappraisal. As the board knows, we have a millage called inside millage totaling 4.62%. As the board knows, that's millage that is not affected by the House Bill 920 reduction factor, so revenue generated from inside millage will rise and decline with changing property values. With the reduction in our assessed value of over $150 million, we are experiencing a loss of close to $700,000 a year just from the inside millage. And perhaps, not perhaps, but actually, worse news is previous levies have capped out, and I want to take a minute to explain that. With most continuing levies, there is a millage that is passed by the voters. For instance, in 1999, voters approved a 6.9 mil levy. As we know with House Bill 920, the effective or collected mills is, historically, has been reduced to counteract increases in valuations, so that the actual dollars brought into the district remains the same. So for instance, you know, 2002, the effective millage might have been 6.2, and so on, and declined. House Bill 920 does work the other way. As property values drop, the reduction factor is changed so that the actual collective millage or effective millage is increased, but it cannot exceed the original voted amount. What we have here are two levies that capped out with this last reappraisal, the 1999 levy and the 2005 levy. We are actually losing about $1.4 million per year between those two levies. Now, our last two levies are emergency levies, and those are dollar levies. We don't, we won't, we'll not have that problem with the emergency levies, because those, that millage will get adjusted for whatever's required to bring in those amounts that we put on the ballot. But for the time being, we are losing out on the dollars from those two previous levies. Put those both together, and from the reappraisal, we're losing about $2.1 million per year, so that right away, that reduces our $5.4 million levy to about $3.3 million. As I mentioned before, the income tax has, we've had some good results with the income taxes. We had a period of time there through the recession where our collections dropped at the beginning in fiscal '12, actually fiscal '11, they started increasing a little bit. In fiscal '12, they were just under $6 million. Fiscal '13, it would be a little over $6 million. Like I said, year-to-date, 4.4% over last year. Beyond this year, I've just made the assumption of a 2% annual increase in income taxes. State Foundation, this is kind of the great unknown right now. As Mr. Smith said, the governor's budget would have been very palatable to us, to say the least, but the House version seems to be the version that's getting the most legs. And within that version, there is a cap to increase, an increase for any schools of 6%. So we easily hit the cap. Now, these increases are for Euclid students, so simulations have been run showing an increase of our state foundation of $1.8 million in fiscal '14, $2 million in fiscal '15, but again, these are based on total Euclid student numbers, which also include the charter, voucher, and open enrollment students. Recent history has shown that we've actually received about, now receive about 71% of the total state foundation pie, if you will. So I simply took about 71% of those simulated increases and came up with an increase for us in $1.3 million in fiscal '14 and $1.4 million in fiscal '15. Another piece of good news is, as it currently stands in the House's version, there Another piece of good news is, as it currently stands in the House's version, there's an increase, a pretty significant increase in catastrophic cost funding. Basically, catastrophic cost reimbursements are paid to districts for the very needy students who cost a lot of money for us to educate. There are certain thresholds that have to be met, exceeded, and then we have to do a lot of filing throughout the year. And we don't get nearly back what we file. Basically, the current budget statewide is $10 million for catastrophic cost reimbursement. This last year, we received about $300,000, and that was probably, I'd say about one-fifth of what we submitted. The current budget bill funding increasing from $10 million statewide to $40 million statewide. So I believe that holding true, through the end, we will receive some additional money in that. So what I did is I basically took the $300,000 a year we get now, and I tripled it. I didn't want to go quite the quadrupling, but there is a recognition of more of those dollars in. School choice deductions this year, $10.1 million from our foundation. It has increased every year since school choice started. Over the last four years, that has averaged $915,000 a year. At some point, we have to believe that those numbers will level off for us as far as the students leaving. However, as Mr. Smith talked about, the General Assembly seems at least somewhat intent on expanding, especially the vouchers. The factor I put in here was, I went about half of the average increase of the last four years. Part of that is, although there probably will be some expansion, hopefully, there's some leveling off. And also, I think if it gets to a certain extent, that will cause us to counteract with reductions, staffing or whatever. So I think the net effect is, won't be quite what any increased losses are. So I took an educated guess at $450,000 a year increase in school choice deductions. Okay, here's a summary of the revenues. You see a bump in real estate this year and next year. We were hoping for more, but again, that's, we're hoping for about $2 million more a year than we're showing, but that's what we're looking at. The estimates are based in good part on estimates provided by the county auditor. The county auditor estimates that we will collect 90% of the current billings. However, over time, we also collect old delinquencies. And in fact, the average over the last four years has been, when you add that in, when we add delinquent collections in, we collect about 96.5% of what was billed, if you follow me on that. So what I did, I took the auditor's estimates and made the assumption of an overall 95% collection rate, and I just bumped it up a little bit every year by about a quarter of a percent, thinking that things will get a little better economically. Income tax, as I mentioned earlier, I build in 2% a year. State aid, I build in the factors that I just talked about. And you'll see that revenues, we're looking at a pretty nice bump next year and then pretty much leveling off for the state after the biennium ending in June of '15. Beyond that, for the '16 and '17 year, I put a 3% increase factor in state funding. Expenditures, obviously wages, personnel costs depend on staffing levels, changes in staffing levels, annual increases, steps, base adjustments, those kind of things. For the purpose of benchmarking and as a planning tool, and with an eye on trying to look out to 2016, I just build in a flat 2% total on wages. And this would be inclusive of staffing changes, negotiator wage adjustments, step increases, and those kind of things. Benefits, approximately half the benefits kind of move along with wages, such as the retirement system, Medicare, unemployment compensation, those kind of things, or workers' compensation, I should say. Medical, I put a little extra bump in fiscal '15 due to the healthcare reform. It appears that healthcare carriers, because of uncertainties, are going to be beefing up their underwriting a little bit. And in fact, there are going to be some direct fees that are going to be charged to all employers, and it's based on the number of employees. And there's a couple of them, one's not so much, but the other one, I believe, is going to cost us about $100,000. For the balance of the items and personnel, if you remember back in the fall, I basically took a percentage of appropriations because we typically don't, we underspend total appropriations. What I did at this point is, we've got actual figures, I used actual figures through the end of April, so we have a pretty good handle on what we're actually spending this year. I need to make a little bit of a guess for May and June. But I based purchase services, materials and supplies, capital and other mostly on the actual. And then beyond this year, purchase services, I've got a 5% inflation factor built in. Because that is so volatile between utilities, special ed, tuition, and those kind of things. Materials and supplies and capital, which is mostly equipment items, we've got more control over, so I built in a 2.5% inflationary factor. The other category, we have a little less discretion over. The majority of that are county auditor and treasurer's fees and law bar insurances and those kind of things. So I went with a little bit more of an inflation factor than the others. And these are what those numbers look like. I broke it down between personnel and non-personnel. This year, we're looking at $68 million, and then up through fiscal '17, ending at $78 million. And we put it all together. The line I always pay a lot of attention to is that third, that tells us if we're adding to our balances or taking away from our balances. This year, it looks like we are still going to deficit spend. Next year, it looks like we will have, at least next year, in the surplus and can add to the bottom line, but then we go into deficit operations again. The fund balance is the total cash balance on hand, so we're looking at $2.3 million. The reservations on fund balance are, consist of two things. Number one, our budget reserve that we've maintained for a lot of years is just under $1.3 million, and I've made an allowance for year-end carryover encumbrances. Those are obviously funds that have been committed but not yet paid. So we're looking at 2.3. So when it all flushes out for this year, we're going to be very close to zero. And we're going to have to watch it very closely. If we get to a point, if the wind changes direction, we'll be put in a negative situation. And at that point, I may come back to the Board and ask to tap into the budget reserve to get through this year. Hopefully, we won't need it, but that very well could be, could be what's happening. With the, now, some of these numbers don't make total sense because there's some rounding differences because if you look at the fund balance at $2.3 million, then we make a half million, but that's showing $2.9 million. Well, if I change that and then something else is off and so forth, so please excuse the rounding differences. But we look for the fund balance to bump up in fiscal '14 a little bit. And for the next two years through '15, it will be close, but I believe we can operate with a surplus ending unreserved balance. Now, what I do in, starting in fiscal '15, you see the reservations dropping from $2.3 to $2 million. I just, I basically took $300,000 of the budget reserve and released it just to give us some cushion there in fiscal '15. But in fiscal '16, I released the last million dollars, so you see the reservations dropping from $2 million to $1 million, and we're still looking at a $1.4 million ending unreserved fund, negative fund balance. Now, in order for us to make it through passing a levy in 2016, I think we really need to find, get to a point where fiscal '17 is ending in the black. And obviously, we're not there right now. We, a couple of things could happen. I try to err on the side of being conservative on the revenue side and conserve on the expenditure side, so more often than not, the numbers do get a little better as we go. We also have, as we talked about before, other reserves from excess reserves that we've built up over the years in our medical reserve account, workers' comp fund, and those kind of things. I believe at the most, we probably have $5 million. And still leave enough reserves, you know, a safe level of reserves in those funds. So we have that to offset ending balances. However, keeping a sharp eye on the over and under, I would not want to go into a levy situation where we have to make up $5.2 million even before we get additional revenue, if you know what I mean on that. So I think there are still a lot of unknowns, the state budget. We still have a lot of delinquencies. If those start coming in, that will help out. But this is the best look that I can take at it right now, and hopefully, we'll see what happens. And I'd be happy to answer questions.
Okay, do we have questions before? I do. First of all, I want to reiterate one part that you said at the beginning, because people know we passed a 5.4-mill levy that was to help us replace money that we had already lost. And then we ended up taking the hit for the reappraisal, which totaled $2.1 million that we weren't counting on losing. And so the 5.4-mill levy, or, yeah, ended up being 3.3. So we're already in the hole at that beginning point. And the $2.1 million that we lose is yearly, and it's not a one-time loss. Every year, we're losing that.
And actually, if I may add to that a little bit, I did point that out here, but when the levy, if you remember, the process with the levy is, the Board passes a resolution saying we need $5.4 million. I take that to the county auditor. The county auditor estimates the millage needed to get that $5.4 million. It came out at nine mills. That was before the absolute final numbers, which got a little worse. So in the end, that number should have been 9.2 mills. So we're not quite getting, we're getting about $100,000 less in the first year. Now, again, that emergency levy, that millage will adjust into the future, but we're taking another one-time hit this year of about $100,000.
Well, the one thing about, because as you said, the auditor came out and had a little more positive in his estimate than what he needed to be, I am concerned about the estimating that our property values are going to be increasing at that very much, only because at this point, we're still dealing with a lot of foreclosures.
Yeah.
Which is driving down the home sale prices.
Yeah, I basically made the underlying assumption that it's going to be flat. Now, the first test, the big test of that will be in 2015 with the update.
Yeah, the problem with that is that we have to make all these assumptions and spend money according to what we get.
Yeah, and make plans now, yeah.
I'm just in looking at home sale prices, and for those who don't know, I do sell real estate, and so I have my eye on them all the time. And what I'm seeing some of them, home selling for is almost to the point of being criminal that it is so low. I mean, I'm sorry, there's just, there's no other way to say it, but it is just devastating to the community. I know that the city council and mayor are aware of it and are trying to see what they can do. They unsuccessfully did try to get some more reason out of the sale prices, but they just can't, still have too many vacant and proposed homes. And that's what is really hurting.
Now, the state formula is supposed to at least partially address that with the charge-off. However, the charge-off doesn't work when you cap it. If that cap wasn't there, I think the number I saw is we'd be getting another $6 million a year.
Yeah. And that's where, because the majority of the state did not take a 26% hit, very few places took hits that large, that they don't, they're not recognizing the drastic effect of markets such as ours. You know, if we were in an area where we were having, have a lot of new building and so forth going on, where you have new construction, which is new tax revenues, it would be so different. But we just don't have the property for that to happen here, and it is really significantly limiting our ability to grow. On the income tax, I'm glad you put out, because on our original thing, you didn't give us a dollar amount, but it was important to see that, only because when you talk a 7% increase, or a 4% increase, it sounds really great, but dollar volume that increase isn't giving us what a 7% in another category would give us.
4% is 200 plus thousand.
Yeah, so it's not quite, quite the same. But we do appreciate everything we can get in that category. The, I was interested in your comment that the assumption on the choice is that it's going to level out, only because it doesn't seem to be trending that way yet. So I hope you're right. I hope you're conservative and correct on that. One thing that you didn't point out, that you did mention in our briefing, was the casino revenues, because I've had people say, "Oh, but you're getting the casino revenues." And the current estimate says annually, we'll get $50 per kit.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. I didn't. It was the original, when the casinos were first being built, I think they were topping out at $82. And now that reality has hit and they have actual numbers, it's.
And from what the casinos are all bemoaning is that they're not making as much as they thought, which means that will drive that number probably down even more, unfortunately. The catastrophic aid, are we feeling optimistic based on what the House said and any comments from the Senate that that is going to remain in the budget?
I don't know. What I've heard is, at least what I've heard and gathered, is they're kind of going down the road with the House version. And the catastrophic cost currently is quadrupled, and it's outside of the formula, so the cap, it doesn't come in under the cap. I made a decision in this to put some additional money, and I think there is a recognition. In fact, the Governor, a big part of our increase would have been in special funding. So it appears that there's a recognition at the state level that there... So, it appears that there's a recognition at the state level that there's a lot of high costs that they need to fund. Hopefully, it'll stay there. I didn't quite go the four-times route.
I appreciate that. Okay. And just for the general public's knowledge, a few meetings ago, we were talking about the cost of special ed, and we asked, you know, what is, there is no such thing as a typical number, because it's based on children's needs and so forth, but we did find out that we had a student that the cost was about a quarter of a million dollars per year. So, that would definitely be catastrophic, based on what the average student cost is, a quarter of a million dollars for one student, a significant change. So, hopefully, that will help us in those costs. But as you said, that does not in any way pay for those items. Wanted to point out that, from the briefing you gave us, that we have reduced our staff reductions in the last two years by 42.2 full-time equivalents. What we do is we take the average teacher, and that's one full-time equivalent, and so, we've reduced by 42.4. So, it might, it's probably more people than that, 42, but it's, that's how we do the equivalency part of it. The county auditor and treasurer's fees, since they combine that now into one county fiscal officer, is getting any savings on our fees from them? I mean, supposedly, it's supposed to help save money, but.
Not that I'm aware of. I know that we came in under what I budgeted. I don't know if that's the reason, or I just missed it, or, you know, it's a calculation that's done every year, it's kind of, they have a total cost, they spread it out based on tax collections throughout the county.
It'd be interesting to see if you can see it.
Yeah, I didn't notice on the final settlement, any changes. It's still the same categories.
Okay.
I think, but that's a good question.
I was just hoping that maybe we would also benefit from that. On the deficit spending, just so that the public is aware, that does not mean we're operating in the red, because it is illegal for us to operate in the red. We must do whatever we have to do to make sure that doesn't happen. That just means that, this is so hard to explain. The way that you catching your levies amounts, is you get a little bit more towards the beginning, and you spend it throughout the levy period that you're going to.
Yeah. Basically, it's revenues minus expenses, and if the revenues are higher than expenses, it's a surplus, and it adds to the reserves. If expenses exceed revenues, it's a deficit, and we take away from the reserves.
Right. Thank you. That's an easy way to explain it. But those reserves are really going down. And then, when you talked about liquidating the budget reserve by fiscal '15, '16, my original comment on my notes were the entire amount, but you're not, you're still leaving a million.
That's only the budgetary reserve that was put into law years ago, and we put that money aside and just left, we never took it out.
Okay.
The other reserves have been built up over time, and are excess reserves in those funds.
Okay. So, but the ones that you're talking about liquidating is the one that we, that we were required to put away some years ago?
Yes.
Okay. And so, that one, we will take the entire amount out?
Yes, in this scenario, yes.
In your scenario. And then, the only reserves we will have then for any future times will be the medical and, there's another one up there.
Workers' comp.
Workers' comp.
Yeah.
And that, if we have, and I'm thinking of this only because we have a lady at church who's having triplets, and they are trying to keep the triplets for three more weeks before they're delivered, they're trying to come out, it would be too soon, but I, sorry, the budgetary part of me went into kicking in to thinking about the expense of having three significantly preemie babies, and what that would do to that medical reserve fund, real quick.
Yeah.
So, that's a whole nother story. Hopefully, that is what happened.
From year to year, we have caps.
Right.
So, there is protection built in, but it eventually comes out in required funding levels, based on what actuaries come up with, and those things affect actuarial numbers.
And that is the one thing about having the younger staff that we have now compared to, say, 10 years ago, is that there are more pregnancies, which can be expensive.
I think we're generally healthier, but there are more pregnancies, so I don't know. Maybe it's a wash.
Okay. I hope so. Are there any other questions or comments? Thank you for your update.
Thank you.
I know it's so hard to go out five years, it's really impossible, when you see that we already don't know what money we're going to get after June 30th, and won't know until sometime in June, when we're getting it, but yet, we have to make this forecast now by statement. So, these are our best guess events, and that's all it can be at this point. Thank you very much. You have some other articles? Oh, roll call, I'm sorry. Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Van Hoen.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. Item 11 is a resolution to approve the reemployment of healthcare process consultants. This is a firm that we've used for many years to process our Medicaid claims, and the annual cost is $24,000, but through April, we've collected over $91,000 in Medicaid dollars. So, I recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis. Any questions or comments? Every year, we do save money with them, and I remember when we were first collecting the Medicaid dollars, it was very difficult for our own people internally to get the collections. So, this is really money well spent.
There's a lot of record-keeping requirements and processing.
And you have to know how to fill out everything when you go to the state level and federal, you got to make sure everything is exactly the way they want it recorded. So, I do appreciate, this is one, this is money well spent. Okay. Call the roll, please.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Hoen.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. Item 12 is a resolution to approve an agreement with College Now, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Smith, second.
Second.
By Mrs. Lysy. Any questions or comments? You want someone to explain it?
Yeah.
Okay. I figured that was coming. Thank you. Did you want to explain, or you wanted to turn it over?
I'll, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Bell, if he can.
Sure. Thank you. I'm going to turn it over, I'm going to ask Dr. Charles Smiley to come to the, to talk a little bit about the College Now. And what we're really looking to do, and Dr. Smiley will allude to that, is really trying to be able to support our high school students, but I want to make sure you get this specific. So, Dr. Smiley.
Our high school principal.
High school principal.
Our College Now representative is Mrs. Jas McCourt. She's been at the high school for at least as long as I have been, and she works tirelessly for 120 days to ensure that our seniors and juniors actually understand the college application process, as well as the best ways to secure scholarships as they pursue post-secondary education.
So, this is a new agreement with them, or?
No, Dr. Smiley called me, they sent him an agreement, and he called me asking whether he should send it to me, or what to do with it, because we usually execute agreements at the board office and through the board, and I thought for this dollar amount, we should probably have a board approval. But I know they've been, we've been with them for a long time.
Yeah, again, at least for my tenure, which is four years now, she's been with us.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? Mr. Smith?
Yes. I've actually written about college scholarship programs. Cleveland Scene magazine actually asked me to do an essay a couple of years ago, and I wrote about the Kalamazoo Promise, which is a program that's unique in Kalamazoo, Michigan, though it's being replicated in a few other areas. And I've actually sat down with the College Now folks, they used to be called the Cleveland Scholarship Fund. And I was actually at an event where they rebranded themselves College Now. This is, I want to say this was 18 months ago or so.
Sounds about right.
But, so, yeah, the College Now folks actually do some really good work to try to capture money that's available to our graduates to make college more affordable. I mean, that's essentially their purpose, and they have agreements with most public school districts, I would say, across the area. So, you know, happy to give them an endorsement, you know, from this chair, and because it's a good resource for our kids to have.
Thank you.
Once you mentioned that it was from the old Cleveland Scholarship Program and Cabinet, that's what we were wondering if that's what it was. So, that's, thank you very much for clearing that up.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
This is Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Hoen.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. And item 13 is a resolution declaring a need for a single-source vendor for the installation of a wireless network, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar?
Yeah.
Okay. Second.
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis. Are there any questions or comments?
Could I just make one comment?
Sure can.
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is what we discussed in our work session last week, just as a reminder, and went through the rationale behind this sole-source providing. So, I just want to remind the board.
And for the public's knowledge, the sole source was because this was, we're asking for the brand of equipment to match the equipment we already have. So, we don't want to have somebody else's wiring trying to get into equipment that we currently are using. And this is for the high school.
Exactly.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Hoen.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Hoen.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Hoen.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Hoen.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Hoen.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Hoen.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Hoen.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Hoen.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Hoen.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Hoen.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Hoen.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Hoen.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Hoen.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Hoen.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Hoen.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Hoen.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Hoen.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Hoen.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Hoen.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Hoen.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Hoen.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Hoen.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
This is Lysy. I would just like to point out that we have three teacher retirements being added and that is Mr. Carl Jordan, who is a physical education teacher, Mrs. Mary McNulty, who's an intervention specialist, and Mrs. Sandra McClave, who is a technology coach. So again, we thank them for their years of service. I know they've been here quite some time, so we do appreciate all that they've done for our students.
And we will recognize all of our retirees next month.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item 18 is resolution considering grant payments and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. De Angelis. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item 18 is resolution considering grant payments and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. De Angelis. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item 19 is a resolution recommending the approval of tenure for two certified staff members for the 2013-2014 school year and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. De Angelis. Are there any questions or comments? Will this be the last that we'll see for tenure this year or is it possible for them to still apply?
Currently, they can apply at any time, but that will, when we start the new school year, then there will be deadlines.
Thank you. And a whole new formula.
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay. There's no more questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item 20 is resolution considering a reduction in force for the ABLE and Resource Center staff and that is the adult basic literacy education staff and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar.
Second.
Second by Mrs. De Angelis. Are there any questions or comments?
I just, just one comment. I'm going to ask John Switzer, Assistant Superintendent, just to give you an update on the current status. We were able to broker a deal. One of the things that you asked at the work session was a couple of questions regarding the timing and being able to be able to, for us to be able to do this in a reasonable amount of time. And I'm going to ask Mr. Switzer to talk about what we were able to do and how the timing of this whole issue will take place. So, Mr. Switzer.
Is that on? Okay. Yeah, we just found out about the Northeast ABLE Resource Center not being funded. As a matter of fact, all four resource, there's four resource centers in the state of Ohio and the funding has ceased for all of those. There's going to be one resource center housed at Ohio State. And we originally, we just found out about this the end of, well, month. Glory Gillette called me at the end of April. We didn't get a letter until May 7th or 8th that basically said that everything was to be shut down on June 30th. And that included all inventories, last day of providing services and so on and so forth. And basically, I got on the phone to the director in Columbus and I felt that that was kind of an unreasonable request. That has been changed from the end of June to July 31st. So we have, the services will end basically the 30th of June, but we have a month then to close things out. As far as the other, the local ABLE grant that goes with the GED that had been run by Monica, well, under the direction, basically, of Monica Nagel for quite some time, we go back a few months here where there was a strong recommendation not to close that, but to merge it with another program operated by Tri-C. And we just received on May 7th the closeout procedures for that and how that's going to work. That merger is going to go ahead, so there's still going to be services provided to our students there, but it's going to be provided through Tri-C as the, you know, fiscal authority. That one, I believe, does still cease to end on June 30th, but we've known that one for a little bit longer. That was not where they were shutting us down. That was a merger. So there's a difference. The ABLE Resource Center is a shutdown, the other one is a merger.
Thank you. Just want to say how sad it is because we know that our Resource Center was one of the best in the state and it only, was the only one operated by a school system. All the others were operated by universities. So it's always been a special source of pride for us and they do great work. It's just sad to see, because you know, once it goes to Columbus, we're not going to get the attention that we did before.
Well, in my discussion last week, I was told by the director that we actually had more resources at the northeastern center, like a greater variety of, larger catalog of everything than the other three combined, to give you some idea.
And then they do away with it.
Yeah, which may be even a little harder to do in by the end of June.
Yeah. It's so sad, but yet that's the way the state balances their budget is by cutting out the programs that are more local.
And they're blaming it somewhat also on federal dollars. Those are some federal dollars that come in there and the trouble in Washington with the federal government is also contributing to that. At least that's my understanding.
But they didn't make anything up, so. All right. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thanks. Madam Chair, members of the board, item number 21 is a consideration for grant applications and I ask for approval.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. Lysy. Do you want to?
Sure. Just to give you a little bit of background, there's two grants. The first one I'm asking for approval on is the Ohio Department of Education grant. And this is a grant that we've used to support Saturday School and to support resources at the high school. And what we'll be able to do is to be able to continually do that and also the Family Resource Center. So it's an opportunity for us to be able to fund those areas of support for students at the, at the high school.
Are there any questions or comments? And they are competitive grants?
Yes.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Members of the board, Madam Chair, the next grant is the Discover Financial Services Grant and this is a grant that was awarded to a teacher $19,400 at Mike Turk, who was a social studies teacher. And so these funds will be used for technology.
Okay. I think we actually voted for it, so thank you for explaining that. Okay.
I didn't know if we were doing both at the same time or, so just wanted to make sure you had the background.
That's okay. I missed, I didn't answer.
No problem.
All right. We're okay. All right. 22.
Sure. Item number 22 is a consideration for, and it's the second reading of the third grade reading guarantee and, you know, we've had previous, you've gotten the information, this is just the second reading, so I'm asking for approval.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. De Angelis. Any questions or comments?
One really quick comment. I'm looking for one of the notes that I've got. I know I have this document. I want to be able to. Yes. At the event, at the training slash meeting I was at today, one of the things that was handed out were kind of the number of educational mandates that have come down and how sometimes they're competing mandates and, you know, they come from either Washington DC or they come from Columbus. And there was a quick kind of, how many do you think there are and how can you group them? There's 31 different educational mandates and trying to make them all coalesce around a curriculum philosophy is a very difficult one, but third grade guarantee is one of those.
And this is all in regard to us advancing public education?
Exactly.
Is there anything in this policy that is really, doesn't just simply mirror the law that we have to have in place?
No, we're going, Madam Chair, members of the board, we'll go way beyond the law because we want to make sure our kids are achieving, but everything in the policy is about following the law.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item 23 is to consider the review policy and this is number 2623, student assessment and academic intervention. Along with what Mr. Smith just described are some mandates associated with the assessment now and when students are not meeting the objectives and what we have to do with interventions and their requirements, again, of the law. And this is just the second reading of that and so we're asking for approval.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. De Angelis. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. And then finally, item number 24 is a consideration for approval for the Ohio High School Athletic Association membership for 2013-14 and we're asking for approval.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. Lysy. Are there any questions or comments?
And just so you know, just for the board, this is the annual fee that we pay to participate and be under the Ohio High School Athletic Association bylaws and rules and opportunities.
I have a question. Okay. From my email, I might need a little bit of clarification, I'm sorry. I see it's a 300, roughly a $300 membership. Is it because, is it $300 times three buildings or is it $300 times the district?
I believe it's a district amount. I can clarify that, but I believe it's a district amount. I'm really going back to when I was on the board and it usually comes from the district to cover all sports. There isn't necessarily a fee for middle school. It usually covers the high school.
Thank you.
And in talking with Mr. Bell, he did reassure me that some of the incidences that had happened in the past to UCL students has all been taken care of, so we don't have to deal with those issues ever again. And they are working under new rules and they are more favorable to students. So it's appreciated. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Mrs. De Angelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
I do. Members of the board, Madam Chair, just a few items. First of all, I just want to thank the public and for those individuals that came out for the state of the Panther on Thursday and had an opportunity to not only see what our students were doing, but also get an opportunity to find out where we are in the district. So I appreciate that and appreciate the time that people took to do that. Couple of reminders, the kindergarten registration is going on now, so I'd remind everyone that has kindergartners, please register early. Gives us an opportunity to be able to plan and be able to do some things that we wouldn't be able to do if we had to rush, so we want to make sure that you register. We also just want to remind everyone, the graduation, the culmination of what we do here in the district is June 9th, 1:00 PM at the Wallstein Center. And so we're really looking forward to that and looking forward to giving students their diploma. And then I just want to remind the board that our next work session is June 3rd at 6:00 PM and location to be determined. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there any communications or petitions?
There are none.
Or new or old business?
No.
Okay. Is there any board members informal? We're all getting tired, I can tell. At this time, if there's any additional comments that can be made at this time, coming up to the podium and stating name and phone number, those who spoke earlier do not have to repeat your statements.
This can be something that is not.
Yes, anything that's not on the agenda.
Just wanted to clarify. Good evening. I'm sure everyone is well-tired and ready to go, but I appreciate the opportunity. I am actually glad to be able to speak in this portion because I feel I can speak a little more freely to everyone. The matter at hand that is very serious for some of us as families of the UCL Early Learning Center, closing is a drastic effect on us and we just want to make this known to you. Up presumption is that money is the issue. When I say that it's up presumption, I say that because it has not been officially addressed with the family members. It's hard when you feel like your voice has been silenced and in this matter, a lot of us as family members feel like our voice has been silenced. So on behalf of some of those family members who could not be here tonight, I just wanted to speak to you briefly and ask some questions that you may or may not want to address. Some of the things that are opposed to me by other family members are how many of our board members currently have children that attend the Early Learning Center? How many of the board members currently have children who attend schools that are within our district in general? Another question, why was the city or the mayor not made aware of this decision? This was not brought to his attention until he received our phone calls. What type of input was solicited from the family members that would be affected? I was not solicited, I understand. I definitely know that. What other solutions were attempted before the decision was made? Did you consider expanding and maybe allowing students outside of the district to collect revenue? Did you attempt to negotiate with staff members? I always know that a pay decrease is never anything that anyone wants to do, but I also know that sometimes people agree to give to save the mass. Are there any grants available to assist in this type of programming that is offered at the Early Learning Center? These are just some of the things that the family members were asking. There are other questions that I had. What about students with special needs that are serviced at the Early Learning Center? It is not an easy thing to find providers who are willing to accept special education students at quality care like they receive. What about the teachers? These teachers have families that they support. A lot of them will lose health benefits, excuse me, benefits and they will also end up joining the mass of so many who are already unemployed. What about this city in general? The city of UCL in general? I stayed in the city this year because of the program that is offered at the Early Learning Center. Now I feel like my home purchasing dollars maybe need to go elsewhere. This is the quality, this is how serious the quality of care is that our children receive there. Back to our silence, I just really feel like so many of these little voices have been silenced and it's an entire population of students in this district. Preschoolers are an entire population of students. It seems to me that a smart step in restructuring our district would be to start them off at